Here's the official sign. We'll call the special common council meeting to order at 6:16 by my watch. All the persons are present. Thank you for being here. I guess from a sign-in purposes, can somebody just capture? Maybe Jennifer, you're capturing the attendees here. Good enough to just document them based upon the previous meeting perhaps. Okay. Now, move on to item number three on our agenda. Consider actions recommended by the Finance and Property Committee meeting at its meeting on April 30th, 2019. I'm going to Alder Person Cove, who is now the Chair of the Finance and Property Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Property and Finance Committee meeting met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, April 30th, in the first floor conference room of City Hall. All committee members were present. List of others attending is filed with the Clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item two was consider accepting a bid and authorizing an awarded contract to Yankee General Contractors for the East Riverbank Project Phase Two. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Cove to approve the awarding of contract to Yankee General Contractors for the East Riverbank Project Phase Two. Motion failed. One eye, two nays. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaw to instruct staff to explore river wall maintenance options and a timeline. Motion carried unanimously. Item number three was consider approval of the Engineering Design Services contract with Jewel Associate Engineers Incorporated for realignment of Third Avenue South Line east of the Centralia Center. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaw to approve a $63,118.06 engineering design services contract with Jewel Associate Engineers Incorporated for the realignment of Third Avenue South Line east of the Centralia Center. Motion carried unanimously. Item number four was consider a resolution accepting a bid and authorizing the award of a contract for construction of the Wisconsin Rapids Recreation Complex to the Myron Construction Company Incorporated. It was moved by Catnaw, seconded by Cove to approve resolution accepting bid and authorizing award of contract for the construction of the Wisconsin Rapids Recreation Contract Wisconsin Rapids Recreation Complex to Myron Construction Company. Motion carried unanimously. Item number five, consider executing a grant agreement and accepting a grant award from the Legacy Foundation of Central Wisconsin for funds for the Wisconsin Rapids Recreation Complex. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaw to approve executing a grant agreement and accepting a grant award from the Legacy Foundation of Central Wisconsin for the funds for the Wisconsin Rapids Recreation Complex. Motion carried unanimously. Item number six was adjourned. It was moved by Blazer, seconded by Catnaw to adjourn. Motion carried unanimously. The meeting adjourned at 6:08 PM. With that, I move for adoption of the minutes. But I would like to hold out item number two, please.
So, item A on our agenda, item two on the minutes.
Yes.
Is that what you said? Okay. I call for unanimous... So, motion is...
Second.
A second? Got a motion by Cove, second by Zerfloo, sorry. Too fast. Hit your button.
There we go. Got it. Oops. Got it.
Okay. So, for the record, we have a motion by Cove, second by Zerfloo. Now, I'll move into discussion. I'd like to hold all of them all as separate items. Is there unanimous... Any objection? I call for unanimous consideration of holding out all the items separately. No objection? So, then the motion will be to approve...
Nothing.
When it was called to order?
Just because each...
Yeah, I'll just take them separately, so...
Withdraw the motion.
Maybe withdraw your motion.
I will withdraw my motion.
Withdraw your second. So, that'll revert then to item three, A or two, I guess if you're looking at the report.
So, does... Wouldn't we still need to make a motion and board on it, or no?
No.
Okay.
Well, I guess...
We already had unanimous consent to hold them out for...
Separately.
Separately of those objections.
Yeah, sorry for the confusion. So, Jennifer, you ready for three, A?
Yes.
Okay. Three, A. Alder Person, you want to hold that item up? Is there anything further on item A? We're going to go right in order if that's okay with everybody.
No, I guess... I guess...
Yes, Alder Person.
All right. Here we go. I would like to make a motion to accept the proposal for the Riverbank Project Phase Two.
There's a motion to accept. Is that with... Based upon the meeting we just had, is that with the... With the proposal by the city in here, based upon the memo and some financing?
Yes, it is.
I guess I reworded that officially, but I want to make sure we're understanding what your intent is with your motion.
My motion is to approve the bid as presented by the city engineers.
In dollar amount?
In dollar.
Yeah, the dollar amount that you wish to...
For the dollar amount of $1,348,585.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You have a second by Zerfloo? Oh. You know what, Jennifer? I can't see the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
If that changes in here from the other.
Hang on a second.
Otherwise, as long as I know it was...
Okay. So, when we need that...
There we go.
There we go. Okay. So, motion by Cove and a second by Keller.
Second by Keller. Now, I'll go into discussion. Alder Person.
I just have a question, because the budget amount was 1.5, but the bid was 1.8. I'm just trying to... Because I think, Mr. Cove, you've said 1.5. Did you? 1.3? 1.3. So, is it the one...
1.538 or 1... As presented is 1.0 up here.
Yeah, which is...
So, the city, and I'll go to Finance here, the city has budgeted 1.538, 800. That's what the city council adopted budgeted for.
Correct.
Okay.
But the bid came in, so wouldn't we have to accept the bid?
Right. And with the...
Which is 1.8.
With the modifications as proposed, so yes, you're accepting the base bid of 1.0 in effect. You're accepting 1.7 with cost adjustments to bring it in line with the city's budget amount. So, I guess maybe...
Right. But you're going to have to accept the bid as it was, and then there's a plan of how to negotiate, and then maybe to do some change over substantially. Change effective in the last two and three, but the whole thing, so...
Okay. So, then I would go to the person making the motion to know exactly what your intent is, so we're all clear. So, based upon what Sue said, is that your intent, or is your intent different than that? All right. Let's see, get off for some clarification.
Sure. All right. I guess I'm going to preface this, make the motion. The river wall is old, needs to be fixed. Last year during the budget process, when Phase One was completed, we heard from people that were initially opposed to Phase One, but then they come in, they liked what the city did down there. Phase Two will tackle some maintenance issues along the river wall. We have money on the table for this. It was approved in the previous... It was approved by council's budget. I think we should get it done and fix it up and make it what it should be. At the Property and Finance Committee meeting that we just had, there was cost savings identified to bring it budgeted amount down from the 1.898 million to get it more in line, so it is within budget. That's what I'm in favor of doing. So, I will make a motion to accept the bid as presented by the contract, but the city will find the cost savings to get it within the budgeted amount.
So, that's your revised motion, or at least the intent has been... I'll go to the second. Or, sorry, Keller, that was your second. Is that your understanding, or are you willing to second?
I'll second.
Okay. Alder Person, Blazer, you're first.
I'm just going to reiterate that I'm against this project for, A, we don't have contingency identified. We potentially are on hook for up to close to $3 million next year if we don't get any more donations. This project can wait. And also, there is nothing addressing maintenance to the river wall. There's no money in there for the river wall. It is strictly for scraping off and putting new on. And so, I am far from in favor of this project at this point, especially with everything else going on. We don't need to do everything in one year.
Alder Person, Zerfloo, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess I'm just going to ask a quick question of you, Mr. Terry. There's a lot of numbers here. When I look at this, it looks like the final cost is potentially going to be $180,000 over, but we're actually potentially... It could be much more than that.
So, what... The bottom line is, and again, as was discussed at the committee level, we anticipate that there will be some Phase One funds remaining. There are potentially some other ways to fund the furnishings. What we're proposing, if Joe Eckstead's recommendations are moved and moves forward, is a project that the prices are somewhat adjusted and some items have been... Unit quantities have been reduced such that there would be a $90,791.50 contingency. Right? So, it's below budget by $90,791.50. That's if we remove some of those landscaping items in Mead Rapids View Park. If we transferred $50,000 potentially from parks through furnishings, and we have what we predict... Our predicting is Phase One funds remaining of $140,000. If we weren't to do the furnishings, we'd still be looking at about a $40,000 contingency if we followed the guidelines presented by the city engineer.
So, not... You said 108? I don't know where you saw that.
Well, I'm just looking at the... At the top, the bid came in at 1.8 basically.
Correct.
We budgeted 1.16. Then it just says the final engineer's estimate, you know, 1.35 basically, and just shy of 200,000. So, when I just look at that, I'm like...
Oh, that's where you...
Yeah, so, like I said, there are a lot of numbers thrown out there.
There are. There are. And, you know, like Joe had mentioned in the committee meeting, the construction services are listed at 130,000. That is on a full project. With some of these other items, you know, some of the landscaping and some of these other quantities reduced, we anticipate then that that would be reduced as well. So, you know, what we're trying to present is a project that we can still facilitate the repairs to the river wall, make improvements to that park, and come in under budget. And that's what we're proposing to do here.
And I guess what I was trying to clarify is worst-case scenario, if we approve this the way that it was presented, the way that the motion is, could we potentially be on the hook for a $1.8 billion, or that's not going to happen?
That's not going to happen, because we've met with the contractor. We're going to have the change order. We're going to sign them at the same time.
Sure.
They want the work, and they were willing to sit down with us, you know, especially on those base bid unit cost adjustments. Once they got some clarification, they were willing to reduce their prices accordingly in order to try to see this project move forward. So, I think we're getting the best from them that we can, and I do not anticipate any issues, you know, with them playing the city in any way, shape, or form here.
Maybe that's just where I got confused. So, we are on par with what we approved previously?
In the budget.
In the budget.
That's the presentation with the options was to get a project at budget that the council had previously adopted.
Okay. No, that answers my questions, I think. Because it really clarified things. It actually sounded like the opposite might have been true at the last committee, at the committee meeting prior. So, thank you, Ed Hope.
Thanks for clarifying exit. Yeah, that was the danger in sort of sharing the challenging path to get to that point, but I think for transparency purposes, we want to put everything on the table in terms of calculations. Alder Person, Blazer, you're next.
I guess so.
Okay, good. Any other requests? Alder Person, Kubejack, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've got several issues with this. The first one is, how come this isn't going to the Public Works Committee? And in fact, actually, items A, B, and C, in my opinion, should be going to the Public Works Committee and/or a joint Public Works Finance Committee. So, that's the initial problem that I've got. The second thing is, and I didn't realize this until we were looking at it from what the motion on the floor is, is that we're not at budget level. The budget level is 1.167 million, and the approval is for 1.348. We're assuming that we're going to get money that we can roll over from an existing project that isn't done. I can assume that I might get elected president, because I'm over 35 and I'm a resident of the United States, but that assumption, I can't guarantee it. So, I mean, even if we were only approving this, making the motion if the motion was for the actual budgeted amount, because mind you, if it was authorized to go ahead with this project at the 1.348, the final engineer's estimate, there needs to be a budget amendment, and it needs six out of eight council members to approve the budget amendment. Otherwise, it'll be illegal for the city to actually engage in this project, because it is above the budgeted amount. And I guess the third concept of this is that I was the one that brought up bid alternatives way back when. And I was called out on the council floor, how it is inappropriate and how I don't know what I'm talking about. And bid alternatives, we can't have that. We need this whole project, and we need all the toys and everything else that goes on top of it. And if there's no actual intent of fixing the river wall, this is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, how can we be coming back to a contractor when we said, "No." Kubejack doesn't know what he's talking about, about budget alternatives, alternative bids, but yet now we want to come back and take this and take that off of the project? I mean, that's ridiculous. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I'm absolutely opposed for those three reasons, so thank you.
As a point of clarification, I think we should walk through the numbers again, because the motion, as I interpreted it, and I hope maybe somebody else can clarify, is to award the base bid at the 1.790601 number, account for the cost adjustments, and then apply $140,000 of anticipated surplus, which, based upon what MSA has told us and Yankee has told us about the previous... To be completed work on Phase One, that's what remains to be paid out, we will actually have almost $100,000 worth of surplus on this project, a contingency, what the engineer is proposing to be used as contingency. The... It was not to award the 1.348. So, ultimately, the way the math works out, and I will go to Tim in a second or Sue to address the budget amendment, because it's likely that there would have to be a budget amendment, is my understanding, that the project is not to exceed the council's original budgeted costs, which is 1.538800, but I'll ask the attorney and/or Tim to weigh in on the other semantics. And then as far as maybe Sue, you could talk about Public Works versus Finance, I don't have an answer to that.
Well, I'm just looking at the... I guess if I could just say one thing, if you have questions regarding things that happen or are coming up on the agenda, if, you know, to call us ahead of time, like city staff, that would be appreciated, so we could be, you know, ready for your questions and such. I mean, it's nice to get aheads up instead of being asked, you know, at the meeting. I guess that's just the one thing that I would ask. And I know that some of you refuse to call me, and that's fine, but I... It makes, I think, the city go... Move a little smoother if we have that rapport and that ability to communicate with each other. So, I believe that it is going to finance because it...
Maybe Tim, you want to address the budget amendment?
Sure. I mean, the 2019 adopted budget had a budget for this project of $1,538,000. Of that was funded with a $625,000 stewardship grant, $912,000. That would be proposed in the 2019 bond issue. And then the balance, the 140,000, is that last month, we carried over funds for East Riverbank Phase One of approximately $397,000. And basically, of that $397,000, $280,000 was estimated to be... That had to be paid to Yankee Contractors for the finish of Phase One. I think Joe Eckstead earlier this week, or late last week, got clarification from MSA and the contractor that the amount remaining on the Yankee Contractor was not 280, but 140 due to some... I think the contract basically came under, to my understanding, on Phase One. So, then those $140,000 are then being proposed to be utilized for Phase Two, of which I would recommend that we would bring that back through a resolution, just to clarify. Even though it's really in the same budgetary account, I think it's a different project, and so I think we'll, you know, obviously bring that back to the Finance Committee.
Sue, did you have any other...
Yeah, the purview of the Finance and Property Committee is overall policy relating to city finances and city-owned property, deals with taxation, budgeting, accounting, borrowing claims, grants, licensing, insurance, real estate, buildings, equipment, materials, purchasing, and special events on public property. Public Works is overall policy relating to Public Works programs and Public Works projects and city rights of way. Water and sewer projects, street and sidewalk related projects, sewer, street and sidewalk maintenance, garbage and recycling, dedications and vacations of rights of way, special assessments, street names, parking, and street lighting. So, I guess I think the decision was made that it relates more to city property, especially the tie-in with, you know, possible bonding and such.
Thank you. Alder Person, Cove, you're next.
You know, I'm just... I don't mean to go on here, but I'm going to kind of echo some of the sentiments from the committee meeting, all right? So, we're going to go through every one of these items, one by one, and what it's going to come down to is, how are we going to spend money? How are we going to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money? We have a budget. I agree with Alder Person, Kubejack, we need to stay within a budget, especially anything that was passed in a budget in November. But it just seems like recently, everything on council has come down to, what do we want to spend money on? Now, I'm a taxpayer in this city. My taxes went up last year by the S.S. Valley. My house went up last year, and my property taxes went up. But when I looked at my tax stuff, my city property taxes didn't go up. My taxes only went up because of what I paid to the technical college and what I paid to the Wisconsin Rapids Public School System. My city portion did not increase, and there was no state portion of my taxes. But every time we get together, there is this thing of, "Oh, my God, we're spending tax dollars." And yes, I believe we need to be responsible of those tax dollars. That is our duty and our obligation. But it just seems like every time there's a project or something that the city would like to do for the betterment of the people of this community, we fight it. I mean, we could have something before us to fill in every pothole on Eighth Street and make that street a smooth riding street, and we'd probably find some reason why we shouldn't approve it. We would probably... We could get a resolution before us with a matching grant to fix every park in this city, but we'd probably find some reason not to approve it. We could get anything. The list of possibilities is endless of anything that we could potentially fix or do for the betterment of this community, but for some reason, we'll find a reason to say, "No, we don't want this." So, if we don't spend any money, we don't make any investments in our community, what are we going to have? No pool? No park improvements? No farmer's market? I mean, is this really what we want to give the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids? A city full of pothole-laden roads, parks that are deteriorating, vacant buildings, and bakes and gas stations for your permanent businesses, as far as I can see? I got a common council to make a difference in my community advance. Sometimes making a difference is a hard thing to do, but if it comes to voting to these things in favor of applying common sense to try to achieve something for the betterment of the community, so hopefully, someday down the road, my kids or my grandkids can look at something and can at least say, "Yeah, oh, yeah, that was a part of it. That's part of a legacy that I left to you when I was on council." Everybody acts like if we spend $2 million on the swimming pool, that the sky's going to fall. But we spend millions of... We pump millions of dollars into a sewage treatment plant, which we... If I correct Tim, we actually make a revenue off that from neighboring municipalities, correct?
Yep.
You know, and that was, what, a $28 million facility? Council's... Tom might have been the only person on the council when they approved that sewage treatment plant, but that was an investment. That was a huge investment, a huge risk that the community had to take, and it paid off. So, that's all I have on it.
Alder Person, Zerfloo, you're next.
I would just, per our standard speaking procedure, I'd like to see if anyone would want me to yield time to make a comment, because I know you do. Is that okay, Mayor?
Yeah, of course.
I'll just stand, so that's all ready for everybody. So, my name is Sarah Siluski, and I come wearing many hats. I work for Wood County Health Department. I help lead a young professional group called Current in town. Serve on the mayor's youth council and beautification council. And I work, play, shop, everything within the city. I am a Grand Rapids resident by one line. My neighbors get the nice recycling containers, I do not. I'm a little jealous about it. But I wanted to speak a little bit about third place, and when I talk about third place, it's really when you're not at work, when you're not at home, where are you? And when we talk about our young professionals and attracting and retaining people in this community, jobs are super important to get us here. Housing is super important for us to stay in the community. And when we're not at work, what are we doing? And the investments in the Riverbank have been extraordinary. The trail systems, looking at the downtown, the Y is doing investments in the community. There's many businesses coming downtown that want storefront, and there's not even enough buildings downtown to accommodate the businesses that want to come down there. We look at not only like the outdoor recreation opportunities, but what are their families and youth to do with the splash pads and the recreation center with the pool? And these are all so important to the development of community and retaining folks who want to stay and attracting young families and giving them a pride point in the community. And from a resident I... Of the community, I just speak in favor of all these projects. I think the improvements, while some may view them as more of a luxury, they're very important to the enhancement and investment that the community, that the city does for the overall well-being of the community. It's sustainable. It's going to be there for many, many years to come. I get the pleasure of working with a lot of high school students, many community groups, and when asked, "What is the natural one, number one asset to the Wisconsin Rapids community besides its people?", the second thing that comes up is our natural resource and our river. And any enhancement to our river, I think, is a necessary enhancement, and will only help to attract and retain people here to better utilize and enhance the area. So, Mr. Cove, I just want to say thank you for your comments tonight. I really appreciate the value that you've put on the investment. Speaking from a health department lens as well, park outdoor recreation sites are no cost. Nobody has to have an income barrier. There's no income barrier to utilize outdoor recreation facilities. There's no income barrier to be able to sit outside in the park and be able to talk to your fellow neighbor and community citizen. And then also, there are really improvements that need to be made in that Veteran Memorial Park for accessibility for those with mobility issues. Also, for those who are biking or riding, and we have the River Riders Bike Share location down there, which are our number one utilization area. And the sidewalk currently between the road and the street lights is very narrow. It's really just a single person, lots of bump... Lot of issues with that sidewalk path area. The lighting, some of it doesn't work either, because we tried to put lights up one time, and it doesn't work. And then overall, I just like the committee to really consider the amount of time and spending that's already gone into the project with the design costs that people have done. And really, the grant that's available, that 625,000 grant, I think it would be maybe at the best use of our time if we didn't utilize those grant funds. And in organization, whoever consistently writing for grants, I'm sure if you turn something back, that next go-around is less likely that you would probably be able to get that, because they're not sure of your ability to use that grant funding then. get that, because they're not sure of your ability to use that grant funding then. So just considering the costs that already gone in, and it sounds like we're within scope of budget as well. So for all those reasons, I hope you consider approving the East Riverbank project, and I hope you also consider, well, the alignment with the potential farmer market, park space, the additional parking for the downtown area, and also the Aquatic Center, in which I just have to share, you know, Zach must have presented somewhere with some youth the other day, and my cousin's five-year-old son, who seems to be well above his IQ age, reported to me on his violin lesson that he can't wait for the water park that's going to be coming up, and wouldn't stop talking about it for the 15-minute drive over. So it's really about, if you're not at work, you're not at home, where are you? And what's the city's stake in doing investment and doing something for the community residents and a place for people to enjoy and live? And this is a place where I grew up, I don't have any intention of leaving. Sorry, yeah, five minutes, it might over. And I would like this for when I have a family of my own to utilize these resources as well. So, thank you again, everybody.
I want to see the timer up there.
I know.
Oliver Person Glazer.
I just, you always speak very eloquently at our meetings. I'm just wondering if you've taken the opportunity to go to your town board and share the passion on trying to join these projects and the financing of them, because you do speak well at our meetings.
Thank you. I am relatively new to Grand Rapids, so I've been, most of my time has been taken up in redoing my home. But, so I haven't been really involved at the town, and most of my work has been really involved the city through the Health Department, but that's something I've definitely considered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I agree with Steve to a point. However, you know, I think we're also, probably, you'd probably find a lot of support for A Street potholes being filled, extremely. However, you know, I'm concerned too, because your five-year-old nephew, if he stays in town, he starts buying a house at 18, he'll still be paying for the pool ultimately, because it'll still be paying it off. And my concern is, is we're borrowing millions, and we're borrowing millions next year, but we still have unknown maintenance costs. We still have, we have so many projects on the table that are close to that million and way over the million-dollar mark, and I don't know why we need to jam them all in one ear, you know? And obviously, my concern is passing on debt to a five-year-old who's going to potentially see that debt, and we don't know the maintenance cost. At some point, we're going to, we have a debt capacity, and obviously, we've got room in there. But at some point, we do need to address roads. We have other things that we, there are quality of life things that need to be addressed, and we don't need to spend it all in one ear. Especially with an unknown next year and how many millions we might have to borrow. Hopefully, we can close that gap quite a bit this next year. So that's why I'm still not in favor of this one project. Thank you.
Perhaps with town support.
Perhaps with town support.
Oliver Person Kubashak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to have the opportunity to speak with Mr. Kova every single time. Mr. Kova says something, it resonates in my head. But I think one of the keys why I got onto the council is to be the fiduciary of the taxpayer money, and that's one of our obligations as far as approving a budget. But the one thing, and I try and make my decisions based on how I live my life, and albeit, I've got a small property, a small house, but everything's paid for. I don't borrow money. I have in the past, I utilized it, and now it's a case where I spend what I have. As far as building projects, I'm not opposed to this project if we were flushed with cash and we're trying to find something to spend the money on, sure. But as far as borrowing goes, I want to leave a legacy, much like Mr. Kova, I want to leave a legacy, but I don't want to leave that legacy being debt to, and I don't know if I'm going to have children, I don't know if I'm going to have children, if I do have children, if they're going to have grandchildren, but I don't want to strap our next generations with debt. And again, and we are, we're borrowing for this. I mean, it's a luxury item. It's not a Lamborghini. You know, what we need is a pickup truck, but we don't have the money for either one right now. So therefore, it'd be inappropriate as far as the fiduciary responsibility of this common council, so that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Oliver Person. Kova, your next.
I just want to speak to Oliver Person Kubashak's comment about borrowing in debt and being surplus with cash. And Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when I was at college getting an accounting degree, you had to take a semester of governmental accounting, and basically there's laws that restrict how much surplus cash municipality can carry, which is like why we're not flush with cash, why we just can't grab the checkbook and say, oh, well, you know, we're going to put in a river wall, well, here's a check for $2 million that we have in surplus, or we want to put in a pool, well, here's $12 million that we just pulled out of surplus for this. That municipality, this is the process that municipalities have to go through. Is that, if I remember correctly?
Well, I mean, there's that restriction on how much reserves you can have, that's a local decision. You know, I've always advocated for having healthy reserves, and we do, because you want them there when the unexpected arises. We've utilized those reserves for various things. If you remember, we actually transferred some reserves into Phase 1 to offset some of the borrowing. We transferred $900,000 out of our reserves to offset the bonding on that debt issue. We used the reserves to actually purchase the new garbage bins. We'll probably be utilizing reserves to replenish the snow and removal account. I mean, if you read the Moody's Report, we're very healthy, but that's one of the things they look at. They want a healthy fund balance, which helps keeps our credit rating, you know, higher, which lowers our interest costs. Also, another thing is, you always have to remember that we don't get our state aids, majority of our state aids until November. So you need those reserves for cash flow, because you get your shared revenue payment November 15th of the budget year in which you budgeted those expenditures of which that was going to fund. And also, another thing you always have to keep in mind is, our reserves afford us a revenue source in the way of investment earnings also, which offsets the tax levy. I mean, there was a time when we were having, we could budget $450,000 investment earning, which is huge when it comes to when you have limited state aids and things like that. Now that rates are improving, that healthy fund balance will help the future budgets, and then we'll be able to obviously increase that revenue in the budget revenues. You know, so it's really a decision. I'm not saying that we can't use reserves for certain purposes, and we have. We use some of the reserves actually to remodel City Hall here, but it's a case-by-case basis. But you also want to keep those on hand for when the unexpected does arise. Did I answer your question? Thank you.
Oliver Person Kubashak.
I think you, I don't want to turn this into a debate, and I don't want to call anybody out, but I remember my government accountability class. I also have got a master's degree in public administration, and there is no law governing how much a local government can have in their fund balance. And in fact, reiterate what Tim, the Finance Director, said. You want to have a fund balance, and in fact, GASB, the Governmental Accountability Standards Board, who makes strong recommendations to local governments, suggests that a healthy fund balance would be at least 1.5 times what your annual budget is. So it's a case where, yeah, there are municipalities, and in fact, in 2008, when there was, when we went through a downturn, the Village Whitefish Bay actually had a surplus, actually had a true surplus. And there are communities that do that, because they want to spend in cash, they don't want to borrow money. But again, like I said, I don't want to create the debate, but any accuracy was presented, and I want to correct it, so thank you.
See no further requests to speak. The motion is second on the floor. Any further clarification? I won't ask the clerk to restate the motion, I think we've hashed it on the front end, but if anybody needs it, I'm happy to resurrect that.
This is a motion to approve, right?
It is a motion to approve. Okay, seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Okay, motion carried, five ayes, three nays.
Thank you. Move on to item 3B, which is consider approval of an engineering and design services contract for the realignment project. Oliver Person, what are your wishes regarding that item?
The motion to approve.
The motion to approve by Kova.
Second.
Go to a second, Glazer, please. Discussion, are there any requests to speak?
I just got a real quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Tim, as far as when we were talking committee meeting about the TID funds, from that, from what the Encouraged Foundation offers us for, is it the Tribune Building, is that where this? Is that technically collected in the guise of the TID revenue? Because it's actually like a developer's agreement as far as it's kind of in lieu of taxes? Is that something that we need to, as a council, just to double-check, make a restricted fund for those revenues? Because like I said, are they actually collected in the guise of the actual dollars and cents for TID revenues?
Yeah, they're collected in the TID. And so it's a developer agreement, and I do think the Tribune Building, that development area is a TID project, so, you know, with the parking lot and possibly with the realignment of, is it Third Avenue? Third Avenue, that's where it is. And so then, when that developer agreement is executed, those, when we get that payment, that special assessment basically on their tax bill, that's deposited into the TID to pay for any of those project expenditures identified in that.
Correct, because like at the state level, when you do your tax increment financing worksheet, is it actually added into that?
Oh yes, yeah, it's covered for in the TID.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Right, the developer agreement, it's characterized as a special assessment. They're guaranteed, they're supposed to guarantee a certain level of tax increment. Until the extent that they haven't met that, then they're specially assessed for that difference, so it's just like they're paying taxes.
And just sort of, it's specifically identified as a line item in the state, you know, when you get the report online that say, cool.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? Seeing no other requests to speak, the motion was to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Okay, motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Thank you. Item 3C is consider a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing the award of contract for the construction of the Wisconsin Rapids Rec Complex to Myron Construction as presented.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Kova, is there a second? Second by Katnoff. Is there any requests to speak? Oliver Person Kubashak, your first.
I drank two energy drinks before the meeting, so I'm kind of excited, so that's why.
Next time, share some of those.
But I guess as far as this project goes, again, I've never been opposed to the water park or what we, somehow we're calling it the recreational complex now or whatever. But I've been opposed to doing a project that we don't have money for, so I won't be voting for this, I'll be voting against it. But it's a case where I do want to take the opportunity to suggest that the low bidder, Iron Construction, is a great company, that they've done a lot of work in the community. They were the general contractor on our West Side Lift Station project. They built a new pool at Lincoln High School, they're working on the YMCA right now as a general contractor. And I've worked for Myron Construction before, and I've also worked as a subcontractor on a general contractor, Myron Construction job. And it's actually kind of interesting how the two different bids were. I'm familiar with Brickell Brothers, but I don't know how many employees they would bring from the local area, whereas making a statement, Myron Construction hires a lot of local tradesmen for the projects. In fact, there's several people from the Wisconsin Rapids area that are working on the YMCA. I got the opportunity to work a little bit on the West Side Lift Station as a subcontractor tying the rebar, and in fact, with the Lincoln High School swimming pool project, it was kind of cool, because there was actually four different ironworkers who graduated from Lincoln High School that got to work on that project. So that was one of the things that we kind of thought were really cool. So despite the fact that I'm not going to approve this, I want to offer my, I guess, personal opinion that Myron Construction is, despite the fact that the headquarters might not be in the Wisconsin Rapids area, they do employ a lot of tradesmen and women that work on a local project, so that's all I got, thank you.
Other requests to speak? Joe?
Just with what Dad was saying, I'd also like to mention that it did supply a list of subcontractors, and a number of their subcontractors are local contractors, Precision Grading, Roundage Refrigeration, I think, current technologies. A number of local contractors will be working on the project, and it's approved as well.
Other requests to speak? Seeing none, I'll make just a couple of brief comments. I want to acknowledge everyone's work in this process, I don't care how the vote goes, but I think it's important to just acknowledge the moment, to appreciate city staff who added any coordination and additional time to everybody's schedules to make this moment happen. And Oliver Person Rayom, who's the stalwart and kind of the person that's really worked to make sure that this project gets to the council this time around, had been committed at least a day, a month, if not more, in some of those meetings that we held over 2016 and 2017, just from a design and getting some of those things right. You know, this was a heavy lift in a lot of respects. And my final comment goes to the financing component. As I mentioned, at the committee level, we all know, we have under a $4 million gap to close, and I believe it's going to require every member of the council as well as the community to encourage those to contribute to the project that may have the means to do so. There's a number of ways, and this project's going to outlast all of our tenures, the tenure of city staff, I mean, unless they're going to be here for another 35, 40 years, this is a project that will, that could be very, you know, from a legacy from a community standpoint, a lot of these community facilities that were built in the '60s and '70s are ones that, you know, would be very different if our community didn't have them, and this project is no different. So those are my comments. Oliver Person Rayom also had a request to speak, so I'll go to him.
Thank you, Your Honor. I thought about pushing my button earlier, I guess I wish I had, it could have just pulled last. This has been a long time coming, obviously, I think everybody knows that I do support the project. Hopefully, after getting to this point this evening and we pass this, that it's, I believe we're going to pass it, that many years are going to come, bear fruit as we go, move on from this. I mean, this has been talked about for probably 20 years, or close to it anyway. Took a long time to get to this point, and it took a lot of, a lot of work by staff, Oliver Persons, and that to further it along, to keep moving it along. It's going to, I believe, very, going to be a very beneficial addition to the community. I think it's something that we're all, all can be very proud of. Obviously, it comes with a big price tag, but hopefully that, with the move that we are making tonight, that we'll make in a little bit here, is that others will come forward to help us. I guess from the city taxpayer end, maybe go down, let other donations will come forward, I hope so. And with that, I'll just, you know, let us, let us get to the vote. It's going to be, it's something that I can remember way back, meetings with actually several people from different communities. You know, hopefully those communities will take it on a look at, to coming on board with some type, to be involved somehow. So back at the library way back when, so with that, I'll just end with, let's get to the vote.
Thanks, Tom. Any other comments for the requests to speak? The motion is to approve as presented. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, six ayes, two nays.
Thank you. As far as next steps, we'll be negotiating a contract and ultimately executing on that. There is, I think the contract weighed in on the building, sort of the warming house is not materially beneficial to them and their project, so I think the city would...
No, I think they intend to use it.
Oh, do they intend it at the end? Okay, all right. But otherwise, scrapping the non-portion of it to utilize another part of the facility.
Right, that's, we'll do that at the conclusion of the project whenever they want it removed for, that's, a project for us is to do the removal.
Okay, thank you. 2020 is the city's centennial officially as Wisconsin Rapids, so I think for a lot of reasons, this project alongside some of the others are quite appropriate to be... of reasons, this project alongside some of the others are quite appropriate to be celebrating the city's formerly as Wisconsin Rapids, the city's 100th year. So thank you all again for your comments, and there's also some additional items that are gonna have to come forward. Our staffing levels will have to change, I mean, there's some questions on operating model in terms of maintenance costs and those types of things, we're gonna have to, you know, continue to discuss those elements, because we all know that our current structure doesn't necessarily lend itself to being able to operate a facility this magnitude. So it's our understanding that the facility, based upon the schedule that was shared and provided anything, barring any other unforeseen circumstances, the facility would be open for the summer of 2020, is my understanding. So I don't think I, the staff have anything further to comment on that front. Move on to item D, 3D is consider executing a grant agreement and a grant award from the Legacy Foundation for funds for the project that was just approved.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Zerflu, and a second by Cole. Move on to discussion. All the person, Raff, do you want to restate your comment from before, from the committee meeting, or I can reiterate it?
Just about Legacy Foundation?
Yeah.
Notably, I just wanted to make a comment before, and I apologize if I'm trying to turn that point down. It was section six, I believe? G, the last sentence, it is the goal of the foundation to minimize the amount of funds that the city will borrow and end up being the responsibility of the taxpayers. And just to be clear to the Legacy Foundation, I appreciate at least somebody around here is trying to look out for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Any further comments? And no further requests to speak? Motion is to approve, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, seven ayes, one nay.
Share with Legacy Foundation the result of that. Legacy Foundation, sort of to the comment that all the person, Raff, indicated.
You were saying the same way.
No, what's that? That was a big lift for the foundation to support the project to the extent they did. While they have a large disbursement to make every year, there's a lot of need in the community for a lot of projects, and I believe this is the largest, if not one of the largest single gifts that they have given to a project besides the facility that's adjacent to City Hall here, so I want to thank them for their support. Enter for adjournment, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Zerflu is our second. Second by Cole, all in favor?
Aye.
At 7:09, yep. Go Bucks.